I call this meeting to order at 9:30. President and Vice President William Link, Secretary Charles Kirby, Treasurer Deborah Isaacs, and myself constituting a quorum. Please rise for the invitation invocation that will be given by Ms. Mary Brown, Ms. Katie Brown, and the reciting of the pledge to the United States and Texas flags.
Lord, we thank you for being with us this morning. As we, friends and neighbors, gather together this morning to make decisions regarding this wonderful community that we live in, we ask that you be with us in a powerful way to guide our actions and our words in a way that would be pleasing in your sight. We ask for prayers for those in our community who are suffering and in need. We ask prayers for rain to replenish our lands, the nourishment that we need so badly. Nice, gentle rains, soaking rains. We also ask, Lord, that you watch over our government leaders and guide them in their actions with so much unrest around the world. We ask that you watch over our Border Patrol, our law enforcement, our military. We ask your blessings upon them as they go about protecting us in our daily lives. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and entitled to exercise right, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Directors, the minutes from the December 18th, 2019 regular board meeting were provided in your board packet. Are there any corrections?
No.
Ms. Isaacs?
No.
Mr. Kirby? Okay. And I have no corrections either. If there are no corrections, all in favor of approving the minutes as distributed signify by raising your hand. The minutes are approved. Secretary Kirby, do you have a report?
I do. Over the course of the last month, we received two letters requesting ballots either be sent to a different address or a missing ballot. Those are being addressed and will be sent out today. And the only other thing I have is on January 3rd, I delivered the official list of ballots and names to Valdez Accounting Services and was able to sign the agreement for our special meeting. That is it.
Directors, do you have any questions for Secretary Kirby? Do you have any questions? Ms. Isaacs, treasurer's report?
The December FCSA revenue was $180,969.07. The total December FCSA expenses for the month of December were $228,532.70 for a negative for the month of December of $47,835.28. For the October through November, October through December financials, the total revenue was $617,069.00. And the total FCSA expenses were $621,353.20. So for the first quarter of the year, we are sitting at a negative of $5,037.24. The December Los Morris revenue was $4,447.34. And expenses for the Los Morris Corporation for December were $7,152.99 for a negative So for the total December FCSA revenue, it was $180,969.07 with the expenses of $228.532.70 for a negative of $47,835.28. But of note, there are several expenses that were not anticipated for the month of December, which includes the $38,000 for the year audit of 2018. There were additional attorney fees and an increase in FRM and charter membership give backs. The give backs and delinquent accounts have increased our bad debt, which is reflected in the financials, and it continues to hurt our bottom line. Since the start of the fiscal year, there have been 24 members give back or canceled their memberships with Fort Clark Springs Association. There is currently $43,602 of common property assessments past due. There's $443,343 in assessments for four months that are past due, most of which are at legal for collections. Also, two of the four months past due is $8,803. We cannot stress the importance of getting these assessments paid or getting on a payment plan to start paying these assessments. There will be a specific report on legal fees paid out later in this meeting.
Directors, do you have any questions for the treasurer?
No.
This month, Mrs. Isaacs was the director on call. Do you have any director on call in court?
Yes, I did. For the month of... Yes. There were 1,708 ballots were sorted and mailed for the special election. The Groupon down at the golf course has been discontinued as people were taking advantage of that and wasn't being monitored. So this was something that was put into place oh, four years ago, and the pro shop manager just didn't think it was anything that was beneficial. So we discontinued that Groupon at the golf course. Upgrades to the RV Park Internet service are almost complete. Two more motel rooms have been completed totaling three of 38. Two more are near completion, and two more will begin next week. Once these rooms are completed, the new rates on those upgraded rooms will go into effect. The administration office was burglarized. Six trophy vouchers were stolen along with $1,100 and one of our surveillance cameras and also some items that were in our display case. Several acts of vandalism have occurred in the past month, as well as the sprinklers near the teen center were kicked in, the glass door at the teen center was broken, and then three areas of the fort were hit with graffiti. All those items, the graffiti has been painted with gray paint. And if you see, please, all members, if you see suspicious activity, please report it as soon as possible. The sprinklers will have to be replaced at the teen center walking track also. So there will no longer be a 90-day grace period before a late fee kicks in. On the first of the following month, a late fee will incur. We want to thank the RV Breakfast Group volunteers. So far, the volunteers have been able to raise enough money to purchase a pole saw, an electric golf cart, and they gave the bridge down in the front a facelift. Thank you, volunteers. There also is a service project planned for January 18th, this Saturday, where the focus will be to clean up the front fence and also trim trees along Scales Road. The golf course also is now on the Golf Now app and will be given their own webpage to advertise the golf course and book tee times. This is an exciting adventure for the visibility of our golf course to other people outside of our actual local area. Top priorities for January are to start repairs to the pool based on assessments from the engineer and start building a road repair plan with MUD.
And one more thing on the motel. This image here, on the left, you see the old handrails on the second floor, and on the right, that image is the newly installed handrails. They look really nice. I believe both buildings are done now. So when you're driving by the motel, look at that as well. So it's really exciting to see all these things get spruced up at that motel. Are there any questions for the director on call?
No.
Committee reports? Airport has no report. Architecture committee? Okay, no architecture committee report. Golf?
Good morning. The golf committee met a week ago today, and most of the meeting was spent discussing the logistics of the upcoming Los Morris tournament, getting the sponsors in, and some things that our liaison Debbie Isaacs will bring to the board regarding that tournament. They also voted to contribute $900 or less to help with the chemicals that are needed to spray the poina on the greens. They also discussed upcoming plugging and sanding of the greens before the Los Morris tournament. And this is our biggest tournament here on the fort. It has been rolling every year for the past four or five years. We're getting more players in, and I would like to see as many people, whether you play golf or not, support this tournament through maybe donations of desserts for the meal on Saturday night or offering to sit out on the greens for a hole-in-one greens and whatnot. There are a lot of things that non-golfers can do to help with this tournament, and this tournament benefits the fort and the golf course tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Preservation? No report? Recycling provided a report already. Do you have something different than what you provided?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to let people know that the summary for 2019, we had almost 39 tons that we took out of the land or that we did not put into the landfill. So that's great. And special thanks to the volunteers as well as Joe Lackness. Thank you.
Thank you. Old Quarry?
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm Sue Martin, and I'm going to read a statement from the Old Quarry for Marilyn McNeerland, who obviously couldn't make the meeting this morning. And what she would like to say is that we are pleased to announce that we've made a change in how we will be operating in the upcoming year. The Old Quarry is going to be doing two productions, and there's going to be no admission charge for Fort Clark Springs members. However, if you're a non-member, there will be a fee for attending the production, and that is to be determined based on the production. We will be offering premium seating rather than the seasonal tickets that have been going on in the past. And the premium seating is going to be located in front, and it's going to be the most comfortable chairs, and it's going to be your seating for the entire season. So you will have a chair whether you're there or you're not. We're going to continue to work with the fort for Fort Clark Springs events and movies, so that's really no change. And if outside entities wish to have sound and lights while viewing the theater for Fort Clark Springs, the quarry is going to be available for a contracted price to provide that service. The quarry is also in the process of making some upgrades in the production equipment for ease in operation in the future. The Old Quarry is also going to be hosting the Second Annual Mr. and Ms. Fort Clark Coronation in conjunction with Fort Clark Days. And the quarry agrees that Fort Clark Springs Association is bringing the program back to the event. The selection and coronation activities bring the local high school schoolers and their families to the event, and Mr. and Ms. Fort Clark act as ambassadors for the fort during the event, reaching out to those in attendance. The Old Quarry is always open and happy to include anybody who wants to provide their services. And being a stagehand, I know it can be grueling at times, to either help with backstage, set buildings, and variety of other options. And anybody that's interested, please contact either Marilyn, Dave Loftus, myself, or Sandy Herman. And as always, we're looking to a great season in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is really exciting that they're bringing back Mr. and Ms. Fort Clark. Are they Misses or Miss? M-I-S-S.
I would call it Miss.
Miss. It'll be fun. Are there any questions for any of the committees that we didn't ask? Okay. All right. I have two announcements. Architecture committee is looking for someone with great typing skills to help with CCNR updates. This committee meets weekly as required and consists of up to seven members, and they have a couple of vacancies as well. The Historic Building and Repair Committee, otherwise known as Preservation, has two vacancies. This committee is responsible for the repair and exterior of non-privately owned historic buildings in Fort Clark Springs. The committee meets once a month and consists of seven members. So if you're interested in serving in either of those, please let us know. All right. There is no old or unfinished business. The first item in new business is to consider service club renovations. The service club is the largest producing revenue stream of the venue rentals that the fort has. The women's bathroom has severe issues with the flooring. The walls are covered in staples and need to be painted badly, as well as the ceiling is in terrible condition. Three bids were procured, and of the three bids, directors, you see the one that satisfies the intent to keep the bathroom floors true to their original state. There were estimates given, and one of the companies gave a five-day completion date to have it all finished from start to finish, which is the shortest timeframe of the three bids. This facility cannot be left out of commission for a long period of time. The main room, kitchen, hallway, bathrooms will also be painted. The ceiling will be retextured and floated. The user agreement for facility rentals has been updated to reflect that there will be no stapling to those walls of any kind anymore. The restricted fund would be the source of revenue to pay for this renovation, and it is within the standards to which the fund can be used. There is approximately $364,000 in that account, and $180,000 of it is obligated to the landfill. The board is being asked to consider this expenditure. So at this time, I'll go down the line. Mr. Link?
I believe you said that the shortest timeframe was five days. I thought it was 10.
I believe it was five.
It says 10 here. I...
They wrote 10, and they said that we'd identify. That's what it was.
Five or 10 doesn't really ultimately concern me. I just wanted to know which one was correct.
Yes, sir.
So, no, I have nothing to add to this. I think that building is long overdue for renovation.
Okay. Isaacs?
The one bid was way considerably less, and what I'm reading is they're not going to do the bathroom floor in the ladies restroom. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So we received one bid that was specifying that they were not going to do everything. They were going to do everything but the bathroom, and that was significantly less for that reason. They just didn't want to mess with it at all. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Kirby?
No, I mean, we need to get something done, so I don't have any comment on this.
Okay. And then just so that everyone kind of has the numbers in their minds, the first bid, which was all encompassing to do everything, was $9,870.50 with an estimated month to complete the work. The second bid, which did exclude the restroom work, is $2,700, and they estimated seven days to complete. The third bid is for $8,600, and their estimate said 10 days to complete, but they did say in person that they were going to be able to do it in five days, and that did encompass all of the work. And it's that third bid that appears to be what the best option would be, as they would be leaving the existing floor intact. The other company that said that they would do the floor wants to put a subflooring in and have a totally different kind of a floor, which is not in line with the way that the floor originally was, which is the intent, that we want to keep it similar to the way it was.
It's the same.
Yes, ma'am, for the historical aspect of it, yes. So at this time, I will open the floor up for three member comments. Yes, ma'am. You'll have to come to the mic.
I just had a question.
Well, this is comments, so it's that question.
Just a second. It's a question concerning the sub... But I'll come up. Oh, please. I just wanted to remind them that the foundation support beams underneath the floor had sunk, and they were online to be repaired. What is that work done before you go through repairing the floor that's going to settle and sink again if the substrate is not fixed?
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other member comments? Okay, seeing as there are no other member comments, are there any other comments from the board?
Well, since it came up, what was done about the sinking beams underneath?
That specific item will be addressed once they get into that floor.
That's part of that work.
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Then I have no other coming question.
Okay. Ms. Isaacs?
No questions.
Mr. Kirby?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor at all?
I'll make a motion on the floor to approve the lead roofing for this contract.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to approve the third member, which is elite roofing, to do the service club renovations. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Next item on the agenda is to consider limited access dates for 2020, open gate dates. The board last year in April established dates upfront to pre-approve open gates for... This was actually very helpful because then the board didn't have to do this every single time historical events take place. So the board has been given a copy of a proposed resolution, which would have an open gate, which we're calling a limited public access, because the access would be limited to wherever that specific event is. And on this list are the following: Fort Clark Days, which is historically held the first weekend in March; Bracket Independent School District Spring Break Week, historically in March, and that's for the pool; Easter Sunday; Fourth of July; Memorial Day Weekend, Friday through Sunday; Labor Day Weekend, Friday through Sunday; October 31st for Halloween trick-or-treating; Bikini County Arts Council Christmas Tour of Homes; and participation in classes being offered by vendors in a signed usage agreement with Fort Clark Springs Association. In other words, like the taekwondo, the dance classes, the exercise classes. So at this time, what I will do is go down the line for inputs from the board. Mr. Link?
No, this made this easier, and I can't see why we would not vote to open a gate on something we've always voted to open a gate on anyways, so I would like to see that continue.
Okay. Ms. Isaacs?
I agree with Mr. Link. I think it's a good idea that these are out there so people already know these, and it is a good thing for the fort.
Mr. Kirby?
No, I'm in agreement with this as well.
Okay. Are there any dates that we missed?
Not that I thought of, no.
Yeah, because I went back and I looked at a previous workshop as well on it back in April last year, and I didn't see anything different, so...
So anything else that somebody might want an open gate for that you need to come and ask for the approval of that day?
Correct. According to the resolution, it says, "Any additionally requested dates for limited public access to Fort Clark Springs Association must be submitted in writing to management no later than 30 days prior to the requested date, and they are not guaranteed to be approved." So that's in this resolution. Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor for three member comments. Okay, seeing as there are none, are there any additional comments from the board?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of Los Morris tournament dates. The board is being asked to consider this action. I am going to give the floor over to Mrs. Isaacs to talk about more about this tournament. Ms. Isaacs?
As Mrs. Brown made note of, this is the main fundraiser. We go out and we get donations to help out on the tournament. This is how the golf committee was able to give the $8,000 to the fort to help buy that piece of machinery for the golf course. It's how we are able to help pay for different things on the golf course that does not cost the members anything to help support the golf course. This tournament is a three-day tournament. We bring the people in. I think last year, we had a full house with the golfers renting the motel rooms. We also pay for a meal for the golfers, and the money that we do make off of this that's leftover after we pay two scholarships. I think we gave $2,000 in scholarships last year out of the money we earned. But this year, we're anticipating two tee times also. And if we do have two tee times, we're going to need a lot more volunteers. So if you'd like to volunteer for this event one day of the three or of the two, we would appreciate anybody getting ahold of either the golf course, David Mann, or Katie Brown and signing up, because we need servers, we need spotters, we need people watching to make sure if somebody made a hole-in-one, because Brown Chevrolet always donates a car. If you make a hole-in-one on a certain hole, they buy insurance to give away that car, which we gave away three or four years ago. And then, so this is one of the big things that brings a lot of people into Fort Clark Springs.
Okay. Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
No.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
I do have a question. So in this request, the golf committee is asking for a donation of two one-night stays for two rooms with golf for two?
Yes.
And so this is a drawing?
It would be a drawing.
Okay. So part of what we are approving for would be to include that donation of two one-night stays for two rooms, so...
And also, anybody that donates over $150, we ask, at least $150, we're asking for a round of free golf with golf cart, which has been the norm for the last 10 years that I know of. It just encourages them to come back as a business person and use our golf course.
Okay. Are there any other comments? At this time, I'll open the floor for up to three member comments. Seeing as there are none, or do you have any additional comments?
No.
Okay. So do I have a motion on the floor to support or not support this?
I'll make a motion on the floor to support this with the requested donations of rooms and then the donations exceeding $150 for the free round of golf.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. We got a tournament. All right. The next item on the agenda is to consider a variance request. Originally, I thought there were two, and it turns out there's one. Unfortunately, I don't see Mr. Lackness out in the audience, but I do see Ms. Kilgore, so it's possible she can answer these questions. But there is a variance request to allow a member to build a carport and to give them the ability to encroach near the setback. There was no imagery provided. I did... I did request some imagery and it wasn't provided, so I don't have that for you to take. But um, board, do you have any comments?
Well, I would have liked to have seen pictures, but barring that, my question is, is that it says here that there are other structures in the area that have had carports permitted. So my question is, is this permitting this wouldn't put it outside of the grounds that everybody else has been given a variance for, would it?
Uh, so you don't have any answers, Ms. Kilgore, do you? You'll have to come to the mic, you know.
Yes, that was the case, that there are other uh buildings in the area that have encroached already on the, the property line and uh don't apply to the setback. However, I think if you could table that and until you get the pictures, I think that's the more prudent thing for the board to do.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Isaac's, do you have any other, any other comments?
Uh, no, but uh I, I think it would be good precedence for us to get pictures before we approve these variances, so, yeah.
Ms. Isaac's?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Either go out and look at it, get the pictures or something, but just approve a variance without anything knowing how far, I don't believe is the right thing to do.
Okay, Mr. Kirby? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I agree with getting pictures.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the floor or do I need anything with this action item?
I'll make a motion that we table it until we can at least get photographs of it, if not go out and see it. But I'd, I'd like to see the photographs and I'd like to see that become kind of a standard practice for us to request that.
I'll second. Okay, have a motion on the floor and a second to table this action item. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That motion passes unanimously. Action's tabled and uh if possible, we may wind up doing this electronically. The next action item is to consider the legal review of the proposed rules and regulations. Let's see, after the December board meeting, the proposal was sent to the lawyers for the, for review. The board has received the inputs from legal and now the board is being asked to accept or decline or amend the inputs and make a decision on the next steps for the rules and regulations. So at this time, I'm gonna turn over Mr. Link for any comments that you may have.
Um, I would say, I, I would accept all of the amendments that legal made and I would like to see this get put out to membership for a while so they can kind of look through it and present their own questions or concerns before we go forward with voting on anything.
Ms. Isaac's?
After looking at these last night, I agree with Bill. Um, there's some changes in here which make a lot of sense and I, I think it's really to go to the membership to look at.
Okay, Mr. Kirby?
I concur with it, uh, going to the membership for reviewing.
Okay, do we have a timeframe that we wanna leave it out there for almost two weeks, a week?
At least a month. Can I say at least a month? Because it's gonna take some people to, I mean, it's kind of a long document. Not only do you have to sit down and read that in one shot, so I suggest thirty days.
Thirty days, starting today? Anyone have any inputs? I think that sounds good.
I'm good with thirty days.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the floor for up to three member comments. Mr. Herman? And then Ms. Martin?
My name is Bill Harmon. Are you gonna have hard copies at the front desk?
Yes sir, we'll provide hard copies. Mrs. Martin?
Mr. Harmon, interested.
Okay. Board, do you have any other comments? No?
No.
Okay, so um at this time, do I have a motion on the floor to proceed with the opening of these draft uh rules and regulations to membership for thirty calendar days? And that would make it, I think it'd be Valentine's Day, those thirty calendar days. So, what a Valentine's Day treat. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we make it available to membership. We can, uh, we can print some, like you said, and keep them at the office and then we can try to figure out how to send it out electronically. We'll try to figure that out too.
Oh, that, that's easy, it's a dispatch.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor or I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. We'll get those out today. As in this afternoon, not like right now, just a second. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an agreement with community council to use the theater. Let's see what I have here. The board has been given the wishes of community council and I'm gonna go ahead and read their email. It says, "Good afternoon, Fort Clark Springs Association Board of Directors. Please add to your January agenda a discussion item for a continued usage agreement with Fort Clark Springs Community Council and the post theater. We would like to continue with the terms in the agreement that expired in October two thousand nineteen. In addition, barring any other previously scheduled events, community council would like to have monthly movies on the second Saturday of each month with one extra movie in December for the schoolchildren the next to last day before Christmas break. Currently, that's to be determined of a date." Um, what I provided in the board packets was the post theater expenses from August to now um so that the board can see how much the facility costs to maintain. And in addition, what you were given was the number of events that occurred at the post theater during that point in time as well as the amount that was spent um in propane to, to keep that facility warm during the winter. Um, during that period of time, from August to December, uh, the water, electricity, and propane have cost thirteen hundred and eighty-four dollars. The agreement that uh community council had was to pay twenty-five dollars per time that they used the facility. So at this time, I will open comments from Mr. Link.
So, looking at this on our energy bill, what, my question is, is why does it change so much based, I mean, 'cause for example, in August, there was only one movie there, it was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Same thing in September, it was about a hundred and seventy, October's a hundred and seventy, but there was two movies. And in November, there was one movie and it was only a hundred and twenty-two dollars. So what's, we, we don't have AC in the building. What's causing the fluctuation in the energy cost?
Well, there are things that are left on. Um, there, when security comes in to do sweeps, um, there's, there's usually something left on. Um, then on top of that, um, the, the whole electrical system there is so old that it utilizes energy regardless. Um, so it's very difficult to find an energy efficient way of maintaining that theater because of the fact it's so old. Um, but, but I actually asked that question to, to the energy people.
So it seems like the biggest issue though with, I mean, okay, it's a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty dollars a month regardless 'cause it's old, we get that. But a fifty-dollar fluctuation, is like a light being left on or, or something along those lines?
It could be, and then like August and September, and even in October, we've had some pretty hot months. And um we have those huge fans that run. So they have those fans running in addition uh during that time to keep it cooled down in there 'cause there is no um air conditioning. And in November and December, we had propane going, so, so that was a little different because that was heating the facility.
And I assume that's, there's your three hundred and fifty dollar December propane cost.
Yes sir. Ms. Isaac's, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Kirby?
Nothing.
So what, what do we wanna do? Do we wanna keep this agreement? Do we, I, I'm gonna be honest, you know, we're at a point where we can't afford to give a building that's rentable venue for, that normally rents for two hundred and twenty-five dollars um per day. We can't afford to do that for twenty-five dollars, for instance. Um, they're there the day before setting up and they're there almost all day, the day of. And um there have also been instances where we've gone into the facility and it's dirty. Their popcorn machine was full of popcorn. Um, there's no actual user agreement that was signed. Um, so I don't know, what do you guys wanna do? This is discussion, so we're not acting on this at this point in time.
Well, have we had an issue where somebody wanted to come in and rent it for twenty, twenty-five dollars a day versus this, or on the same date when community council was proposing to use it? Does that come up?
There, I think there was two things that um were deconflicted for the movie, so.
So that's a yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know, I wanna think about it because I don't have an answer for you personally right this minute. I mean, I know we're just discussing it, we're not taking action on it, but I mean, it, it, I think bears some pondering on, on what to do with it.
And are these the only months that they use the, the theater, five months out of the year?
No, we have, they, they've been trying to do it every month.
That's what I was saying.
What we had accurate accounting for with regard to all of the electric bills immediately at hand was August through December, just because of the fact that that's pretty much when it's really cost the most. Mr. Kirby?
No, I mean, we need to, I think we need to communicate to, uh, community council these numbers and see if there's a uh way to come to a amicable solution to lowering the energy costs and uh, um, you know, reducing the viability to FCSA. But I, I mean, I support what they're trying to do and what they provide the board, so I'm willing to give them a, a break on, on a little bit because it is, it is for the membership. So, um, we definitely need to start communicating with, with CC.
Okay, um, I don't see a representative from community council yet, so I'm not going to open the floor for three member comments unless anyone has an issue with that.
I don't, I think we should communicate with them directly before we go make any decisions anyways.
The next item of the discussion is to define the criteria for the volunteer slash member of the year. There has not been a defined criteria. The individual who won last year had won from accomplishments presented over the course of several years and that seems to defeat the purpose of an annual award. Also, in addition, it was the board solely that chose who the member of the year was gonna be and I would like to propose to the board that we ask membership to, to submit individuals that they feel exude whatever criteria it is that we decide that we'd like to say um is for the member slash volunteer of the year. Um, because truth be told, we don't see everybody and we don't see everything that people do. So um, so I'm gonna open that discussion up now. Mr. Link, for any comments?
Yeah, I, I like the idea of a member of the year award. But I'm gonna be honest, I wouldn't know who to even vote for myself because I don't get out enough. So I like the idea of the members actually submitting people for that award instead of us just picking somebody.
Ms. Isaac's?
Well, I think that that might be something that the membership might wanna have an input into and then after the names are given to us and we go down and look at what they've done and pick the one best out of every name submitted.
No, I'm in support of uh members picking the volunteer or a combination of, I mean, the board, the board needs to take membership input on this.
Um, so with the criteria itself, um, I think that the year award, the actual year, should be what is looked at for that criteria. Does anyone disagree with that? So it would be March two thousand nineteen to March two thousand twenty?
That's what I was gonna ask you, so from meeting to meeting essentially.
Essentially.
Any meeting, no meeting?
Yes sir.
We'll do with that.
Do we have any issues with that?
No.
Okay, so we'll say March to March. And then, um, are we good then to solicit member feedback saying, "If you have someone you'd like to nominate for member of the year or volunteer of the year," 'cause it's a slash, um, "please submit that to a board member of your choice indicating why you think they are member of the year."
I'm good with that.
I think we need to have a little input as to how much we really want in there. Maybe hours, what they've done, different things they've committed their volunteerism to. But there should be some kind of a ground rule set. So we're looking at apples to apples at everything that's submitted.
The only problem trying to define that too strictly is, is that there's differing, there's differing activities which you're not gonna define the same, so I think it kind of goes like anything else. If you really want the person to get nominated, the more you support your nomination, the more chance it's gonna have.
I agree with that.
I know what you're saying, it's just, it's kind of hard to define it because we've got so many different activities here at the fort that it, it'd be really hard to give them a strict set of rules to work from.
So maybe the, the statement would be, "Please include details to support your nomination."
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds good.
And then, do we want to set a deadline to do so?
We have to.
Considering we're gonna have to select.
Right.
So um, if we want to have it in time for the following board meeting, we can say the twelfth of February.
Sure, 'cause everybody, almost a month.
Is everyone okay with that? February twelfth?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. So I don't see a need to vote for this, but as long as we agree to these terms, I think it's very fair for the membership. Um, so it would be a term encompassing March two thousand nineteen, the March two thousand twenty, including details to support your nomination and February twelfth will be the deadline to submit your nominee to a board member of your choice. We all good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Next is a report on legal fees. For the fiscal year twenty budget that we, the board approved, we budgeted for fifteen thousand dollars to be expended for the fiscal year for legal fees. Presently, from October to now, we have expended sixteen thousand seventy dollars. And I've broken it down so that individuals and members can, can read this. The petition group's uh legal expenses solely, just the petition group, is seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. There have been inquiries um from Ms. Hagan, several inquiries, and those by themselves have cost seventeen hundred and eighty dollars. We continue to have the every once in a while um requirement to seek our corporate counsel to address concerns with uh Mr. Lawrence's claims and so those have cost four hundred and eighty dollars. Other members have also started sending correspondence to legal and those expenses have incurred seven hundred and sixty dollars to the association. The corporate firm has been paid a total of thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents, of which, most of it is from reviewing declarations, bylaws, creating the employee handbook, and the initial case handling of Mr. Lawrence's claims against the association. And that is since April, when this board took, um, took uh office. The legal firm representing the association against Richard Lawrence's claims have been paid the insurance deductible of twenty-five thousand dollars. The board, this board, has incurred five thousand two hundred and ten dollars in legal fees, which is in line with what we would, we had been projecting for the fiscal year budget. Seven hundred and seventy dollars of that is related to the collection, um, portion of the legal fees that the association has to pay to pursue that four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in delinquent assessments. So, there have been several reports that the board is incurring legal fee after legal fee to the association. And what this report's goal is, is to show membership in fact, transparently, where those, those fees are actually coming from. There is a possibility that the board will have to look at imposing individual assessments to try to offset the expenditures that have continued to occur. We aren't there yet, but there is always that possibility. There is also a possibility that there may be some legal precedents that will allow us to recoup those fees from some of these, um, from some of these groups. So we don't know yet, but that is a question that we are asking and it is something that is being researched. So at this time, I will open the floor to uh Mr. Link so he can have his inputs.
Legal fees are an unfortunate, necessary evil sometimes. Some of what we're facing right now is not a necessary evil, but it is what it is, folks. And the thought of having to impose additional assessments to cover this makes me sick. But at some point, if the spending continues, we're not gonna have a choice.
Okay, Ms. Isaac's? I don't have any further at this time. Mr. Kirby?
No, it's a shame that we're throwing money away and I hope it all ends on February first.
Yes sir. Um, at this time, I'll open the floor for three member comments. The comments. The comments need to be professional, and they are not questions, it's comments. Ms. Hagan?
Number one, we had a legal right for, to that petition, and had the board responded immediately with, with noticing the special meeting, uh, we wouldn't have incurred the legal fees. And to blame me for requesting records that as a member, by Texas HOA law, I have a right to request is inappropriate for the board to blame me for $1,780 and $0.80 in legal fees when I requested records according to state law. And, uh, finally, uh, the board needs to do some of this work themselves. In the past, we have never asked an attorney to help us with the records request from a member. We simply looked at the law, provided the records, and did not go through an attorney. And this board has been using attorneys to do their own work.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments? Mr. Link, do you have any additional comments?
I'd like to respond to that last comment just by saying that the demand to hold this special meeting by this petition group's decided upon rules and the way they wanted to have it done was never going to happen, and the association was not legally bound to go by that set of rules. The petition group wanted to set their own committee and run the entire thing, and I'm sorry, that's not how it's going to happen. We're not legally obligated to do it, and there is no reason why we would have gone forward with that. Furthermore, the need to have to consult legal counsel came because there has been a number of threats of lawsuits against the association. You don't just willy-nilly read the law and take it upon yourself to deem yourself a law, a legal expert when you've been threatened with a lawsuit. Thank you.
Ms. Isaac.
No, not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Kirby?
Nothing.
I, I do have a comment as well. Uh, the property code does not state that a member can send their request for information to legal counsel directly. The property code 209 states that requests for reproduction of records or inspection of records are to be sent to either the president or the secretary of the board. In this case, every request made to the board from specifically you, Ms. Hagan, have been also sent to legal counsel. So by default, when legal counsel receives these letters, and additionally, other members are also sending these letters to legal counsel, so as soon as legal counsel receives them, they have a responsibility to notify the association and to also bill us for having to notify us, and in which case, this has cost us $400 per notification. Um, and in some cases, there have been, um, responses required to clarify what legal information can be relayed to a member based on attorney-client privilege. So, yes, ma'am, you do have a legal right to request the information, but as a former board member, you also are aware of property code 209 very clearly stating that those requests are sent to the president or the secretary for those specific things. So that is my comment on that matter. Is there anything else that the board would like to say at this time?
No.
Okay. Then I believe this report is concluded. The next item for discussion is finalizing the general manager's job description. At the last board meeting, the board decided that moving forward, the association will be managed by a general manager, and we started working on the job description. Now that we are nearing the special meeting, it is time to finalize the general manager job description and decide what kind of a timeline the board would like to put on filling the position. Mr. Link?
I'm fine with, uh, what we have in the package for the, uh, the actual written job description. I have nothing to add to that, it all, it all looks good to me. Um, as far as timeline goes, I would like to probably say we start taking these applications, assuming that we approve this description, um, now, and then hopefully, within the next three or four weeks, we can come to a decision, assuming we're all still on the board then.
Ms. Isaac.
Uh, I also think what we've got written down so far is, is good. Uh, I also think that the sooner we can get this job description out there and have somebody for us or whoever does get on the board to be able to hire somebody pretty quickly.
Mr. Kirby?
No, I'm in agreement with, uh, both, uh, Debbie and Bill.
Should I read it? Can you read everything on this thing?
Why don't we just put it out there after the meeting?
We can put it out.
It's long, yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, if, if this is approved, then we'll do that.
Yeah.
Um, so as far as timeline's concerned, considering that right now is the 15th of January.
I'm thinking, why don't we set it for, um, collect resumes until, well, I'd say at least a week after the vote, and then not have anybody making a decision till after that, just in case some or all of us have been replaced by that point. There'll be a little lead time for them to finish collecting resumes, and then they can start doing interviewing, whoever that ends up being.
So, meeting's on the first, so you want to say this?
Yeah, how about Friday to 7th?
Is there any issue with Friday to 7th?
No, until then.
That makes a... One, two, three weeks to collect resumes, if we get it out by Friday.
Or should we do?
Which we will be able to get out by Friday.
If you're sure, then yeah, I'm okay with that, because everybody else is.
What do you think? Okay. Mr. Kirby?
No issues with that timeline.
It would be February 7th, which is a Friday, close of business, which would be 17:00 at 5:00, 5:00 o'clock, sorry.
You slipped in the military.
I did slip in the military time. Um, and then we'll get that out as soon as possible. However, we should vote on this and turn that from a discussion item to an action item. So do I have a motion to turn this discussion item into an action item?
I will make a motion that we change this into an action item, yes.
Go ahead, second.
I'll second that.
So this has been, uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second to turn this discussion item into an action item. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay. That passes unanimously, so now this is an action item to finalize the general manager job description and, um, establish a date to which we, uh, will accept applicants. So do I have a motion on the floor for that action item?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept this job description and, uh, put it forward so we can get it posted and start collecting resumes for the position.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right. All right, the next item for discussion is to discuss the process for the special meeting on February 1st, 2020. On February 1st, there will be a special meeting. All ballots and members interested and being considered for the board appointment are due by January the 27th. That is a Monday, by close of business. Ballots are being mailed to the auditor, and the, anyone interested in being considered for the board is due to the board member of your choice by that same date, January the 27th. On January the 28th, the board will send out a dispatch with any information that those interested parties have provided to us for consideration of appointment. That way, you can read a little bit about each individual, although the members do not get to vote for that individual, you'll at least be able to see information about those individuals. There were five names on the list, one individual removed their name. Lisa Vale removed her name from that list. Unfortunately, the association will have to incur the costs of requiring legal counsel to be present at the meeting, as legal counsel has received a, a, a letter of intent from the petition's legal counsel stating that they have intent to, um, possibly file a suit against the board. So the association will be comping a hotel room for the attorney on January 31st. Two simultaneous meetings will be called to order promptly at 9:00 a.m., the special meeting to announce the results of the election, and a special meeting to appoint directors to fill vacancies of the board. The results will be read one at a time by the auditor. After each individual result, should there be a need to pause the election special meeting to commence with the appointment special meeting, then that will be done. It will happen simultaneously. After a vacancy has been filled, the election special meeting will continue. This process will be done for all four directors that were on the ballot. Once all four directors have been read and appointments made, if needed, the appointment special meeting will continue in order to fill the final board vacancy. So, that meeting will conclude with five board members. There will be no member comments during the execution of both meetings. As stated before, regardless of the outcome, there will be a smooth transition to ensure no lag in oversight of the association. At this time, I will go down the line. Mr. Link, do you have any comments?
No.
Ms. Isaac.
No.
Mr. Kirby?
Nope.
I will open the floor for three member comments to this matter. Ms. McBride.
Helena McBride, I'm a member of the committee that began the petition, and as far as I understand, you may have the wrong information about our intent to have a lawsuit filed. That, that is something that I do not know about, and that seems really strange to have you say that, which of course is the reason why you're inviting your lawyer. So my guess is there's some miscommunication between the two lawsuit lawyers. And, you know, the fact that you have to then pay your lawyer to come here from San Antonio, sit here, get a motel room, sounds like it's way overboard, uh, expense-wise. So, there's something wrong here.
That's, thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Mr. Harmon?
Bill Harmon again, are you going to have hard copies out on all of this?
On all of what, sir?
Well, you're going to advertise for a position of a general manager. Are you going to advertise it only on the floor, or are you going to put it out to the newspapers or the workforce?
Thank you for your comment.
And the other one, the same with, the same with the bios that you're going to have of the people who are requesting the position, are you going to have hard copies of?
Hard copies will be available.
Thank you.
Any other member comments? Mr. Link, do you have any follow-up?
No.
Isaac?
No.
Kirby?
No.
Okay, I do have one follow-up comment, um, to kind of respond to Ms. McBride's comment. Your legal counsel sent the association's legal counsel, not our legal counsel, the association's legal counsel, an intent to do so. And I didn't read the letter out loud because it's not really appropriate to read, but in a nutshell, it states that you've grown impatient with the board and, uh, that you are prepared to file suit against the association. So as a result, we had to notify and put the insurance company on, um, on notice, and that does incur, should it happen, it does incur an up to $25,000 deductible that the association is responsible for paying for that legal, um, defense. So as a result of that, the appropriate thing for the board to do is ensure that no matter what, this association is protected, which is why the legal counsel has been hired and retained by the association. So yes, ma'am, the legal counsel now is something that we are forced to do, as we do not know what to expect at that, at that special meeting. So that is my response to that statement. Directors, any last name?
Can I be the third person?
No, ma'am, we've already moved forward from that.
We met with our attorney yesterday.
And, uh, at this point, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to please remain in order with the meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Announcements, on Saturday, as Ms. Isaac's mentioned, there is a cleanup service project that is being spearheaded by the RV, um, group, that is, uh, the group of volunteers. We're very excited for that. They have an 8:00 a.m. rally point at the RV park to enjoy the breakfast, and then from there, they will disperse into two groups to go attack the frontline fence and then to go attack those trees. And, and, and very professional and happy and around shirt. Um, I'll be there. Uh, this, on, uh, January the 20th, the inputs to the Jan, or to the February bugle, I apologize for that, uh, the February bugle are due, um, on January the 20th to FCSA@fortclark.com. On January the 27th, the ballots are due to the auditor, and also, as I mentioned, the, uh, inputs for anyone interested in board appointment are also due that day as well. February 1st is the special meeting at the Post Theater at 9:00 a.m. February 13th is the sip and paint at Creekside Patio, it'll be Valentine's themed, from 6:00 to 9:00. There will be beer and wine available for purchase. February 22nd will be another block party at Creekside Patio with Jack Clarkson and his band, he'll have a bigger band with him this time, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. There will also be beer and wine available for purchase. On February 22nd, there will be a parents' night out at the teen center from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. On March the 6th and 7th is Fort Clark days. On March 7th, we are very excited to have America's Got Talent contestant, Andy Huggins, he's a comedian, he will be at the Post Theater. So, um, soon, we will be sending out information on how to purchase tickets, and if you have a free room seating at a table, uh, you'll be able to do that as well. Um, but, but it's a pretty big deal to have an America's Got Talent contestant coming out, so that'll be cool. Also, March 7th will be a parents' night out to support, um, parents being able to enjoy that as well. It will be an adult-only event. Additionally, every Sunday at 7:00 p.m., there's a movie at the RV Park Kitchen, it's free attendance. Every Tuesday at the RV Park, at 6:00 p.m. is a potluck. Um, they've put a nice little sign up at the front gate for that, um, nice addition to the, uh, Saturday breakfast sign. Every Thursday at the RV Park is men's coffee at 9:00 a.m. Every Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. is the pancake breakfast at the RV Park. They now specialize in Mickey Mouse pancakes with sprinkles. Also, as a reminder, if you wish to do any work on common property, it must be coordinated with admin prior to the work commencing. So we, we love the volunteerism, we love all the extra hands, but we need to make sure that we're coordinating those efforts so that maintenance is aware if we need to support in any way, and also if the board has to approve any, um, changes to common property, then the board is able to do that in an expedited manner. So I'm going to leave this slide up that way, uh, anybody who wants to take pictures of it can do so while we're in executive session. At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session and discuss member illegal matters?
I make such a motion.
Add a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and a motion as second. All in favor, uh, signify by raising your hand. Okay, the meeting is temporarily adjourned at 10:38 to executive session.
Oh, I forgot I promised before.
13th is the Friday free round, 14th and 15th are the, the today.
I think it's Sandy, Sandy, the weekend after, Sandy went outside, she didn't tell you.
Are you leaving?
Yeah.
I've never seen a guy until the second one yet.
No, I have a leader.
I know.
I don't think it, well, there won't be anybody here probably.
Probably not.
Well, we are reading Mark, but I'm.
Yeah, yeah, that was nice.
Good to see that you're up as a lot, that you're doing better.
And the bugle.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it's been great, it's been sending up big.
Okay, yes.
It's sort of.
It wasn't, it wasn't a real bad thing.
No, I had.
Sure it's bad?
Yes.
Okay, well, which, because what I've seen is.
Everybody's got a.
Yeah.
I put a cat.
Yeah.
It was 10 days.
Well, I think we heard, I had to do a campaign, something late, and I said, Mary Jane, you can make us chicken broth.
Oh, I should have had chicken broth, but no, I love soups, I have all kinds of soups.
Oh, okay, okay.
With broccoli, with veggies, you know, lots of noodles.
Although, I've given them a stand, everybody saw that chicken broth, and it works.
Yes, they're beautiful, but you need salt and fluids. And that's it. I'm glad.
Can I ask you about that?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, well, I asked this last night, it was the first night I.
Oh, my question.
I heard you went down, having a.
I thought hunting.
So that was like, oh.
It's gotta be getting better, 'cause mine's getting better too.
Oh, and it's months here, I mean.
I don't know what it was.
This is my first experience with it, and it's like, wow, it grew up.
And I suspect it's probably not as bad here as it would be in San Antonio.
Well, I mean, there, you know, you got your pervading western paintings right there, coming off that curvial area.
My daughter's there, but she's still healthy, so. This is my ready.
Kenny.
Kenny, yeah.
Oh, you have my wife for the Christmas.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Okay, well, she made references. I got some help.
I felt sorry for her.
Yeah.
She's the only one there.
Obviously, I don't.
And so you're one of them that bragged for the board?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great, I somehow had you with the man that was in front of me, I don't know who he is.
Oh, I don't either, but yeah.
Because he got up and I was like, why, that guy's. Les.
Yeah, 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 but he was kind of positioned to do it here.
And he was, yeah, he was talking to me outside, and he's like, you have no right to do that.
I almost hit that.
Anyway, now.
Red bridge.
The whole thing.
Yeah, and they're struggling, you know, we're them, I'm telling you the truth, when you are not, yes.
Well, I think, well, yeah, I'm gonna buy her explanation, okay, and the attorney sent a letter, and now, but I'm about to get pushed.
Now I'm gonna go to the problem that hurt today and say, did you or did you not, because her understanding.
I didn't see it at all. I think that was you this Sunday, it could have been this.
Then I shot a couple of cars.
Their lawyers, yeah, they do that frequently, and I'm just nervous because now she felt, that's what she's, she chooses to pay her attorney to come here and pay them to help her. He's insane, he needs to change huge, my, and her child.
But, 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 but.
I need it, not, unnecessary.
But that's an exposure, many, many years ago, helping, another whole subject, we could get, by attorneys, airline pilots invested like a hundred million dollars towards a retention plan, and it went defunct, and so the airline sued, well, they were insured, and so then the people representing the insurers, their attorneys got involved. The loss was a hundred million to the airline pilots, but by the time all the billing got done, it was 250 million. So they just, they literally legally kept them alive so that they could bill.
That's right, and that's what he's doing.
Well, that's kind of the way the game.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, scary. You know, you think, you think you're soliciting justice, but it always comes down to a pocketbook.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Anyway, good luck, I hope they choose you.
Oh, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Now, you're kind of a newbie to the base, to the base, I say the.
Yeah, we've been here a year now, we got here last January.
Oh, you came from where?
Arkansas.
Okay, not so far.
And you built the house right on Fort.
Yeah, we had a manufactured home, put in, yeah, right on the curve, right on the.
Oh, on Fort Clark Road?
Yeah.
With the red door?
No.
Now the red door, I don't remember that, I thought that might have been you.
Okay, okay, okay. How did you hear about the fort?
Well, believe it or not, my dad was stationed at Laughlin back in the early 70s, we were here in 72 and 73, and I went to school here for about a year and a half.
In Bragg?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, so I still know some people here, plus I've got one sister that's been living here for several years, she's married to David, as far as I used to work at Post Hall, because he's retired.
Oh, sure, I know David.
And then I have another sister that moved here, not this June, but a year ago in June, she moved here, so I've got two sisters here.
Oh, okay.
And we were down here visiting that summer, when my wife helped my sister move down here, and she has a lot of humidity asthma problems.
Okay.
And when she was down there, she did great, and then we were back again in July for a week visiting, I was on vacation, and she did great the whole time there, and as soon as we get back to Arkansas, she's sick again, so.
Oh, boy.
And so I said, we're moving, we're going to Texas, and she's been doing good the whole time. The only problem she's having now is she's got a bum knee that dropped and nuts, you know, and just, just physical.
We can sympathize, I had a hard time getting out of my chair.
Yeah.
Everybody has either knee or hip problems.
I don't know, I don't.
It's old.
Three weeks ago, I just got out of bed, and I'm walking around, I felt in this knee, I felt kind of a weird tinge, it didn't really hurt, you know, it just felt, this is, I don't know what to deal with, and my wife and I went shopping at Walmart U-Valley that afternoon, it was on Thursday, I can remember, and man, before we got home, I couldn't hardly walk, and it's been, I've been living around ever since, it's getting better, but you know, the older you get, it takes a whole lot longer to heal.
Yes.
And this shit, taking a long time.
Even a little cold takes me down.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, we're not a rubber ball, we just don't bounce back, right?
No, we don't. You're right, you are right.
Rubber balls getting stiff.
You all have a good day.
Yeah, good luck to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
If there's a way to vote, I will vote.
Well, okay.
Well, it's not a general election, and they're gonna choose.
Right, it's just, yeah, they point somebody rubber toe. Man, I don't know if anybody's coming back in or what? It's late.
What do you want?
Huh?
What do you want?
Yeah. Oh, I've got some, you offered me one the other day too, I've got some in my pocket as a matter of fact.
I have a bag of, I carry a bag of them.
It's, it's not as bad now as it was the other day at the community council meeting, it was just, oh, it was draining like crazy.
No, it was at church where I saw it.
Oh, it was, you were sitting behind me, that's correct, that's right. Oh, no, are you related to, is it Vic and Debbie?
Yeah, Debbie's my daughter.
Oh, is she?
Yeah.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
Oh, for please.
God, we look just like each other, I take my glasses off.
Well, I didn't put two and two together, but you're right, now that you say that.
But take the glasses off, 'cause I can get rid of the wrinkles, we look just like each other.
Wow, I did not know that, wow, that's awesome. Yeah, I like, I like Debbie, yeah.
They're sweet people. Yeah, they are.
Sweet people.
I can't complain, he's a good son-in-law. He really is.
Yeah, he's a great guy. Of course, I love everybody there anyway, so.
Yeah, I can't complain, I pretty much try to, try to like everybody, I don't like to get in confrontations.
No.
I get involved in them, but I don't really.
Yeah, well, it's not the Christian way anyway, so, you know, that's the thing.
You can't really see it here, I had a picture of the two of us side by side when I was younger, but this was taken about two years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, two years ago.
Yes, I can see it now, I sure can. Now, the two younger ones, who are they?
A back picture.
Now, that's, that's the youngest daughter, right?
That's her oldest daughter.
That's her oldest daughter?
Yeah, that's Stephanie Hale.
Oh.
And that's Tracy, and that's Leyton.
Because there's another one that comes to church, what is her name?
Peyton.
Peyton, that's right, I've heard that before, Peyton.
Yeah, Peyton, Peyton's.
Yes.
Where is she?
Peyton.
Yeah. I got a picture of me and Peyton together somewhere.
So I didn't realize they had an older daughter, yeah, she's a pretty gal, I didn't realize they had an older, an older daughter, then where's she live then?
Peyton, right now, she's living in Abilene.
No, what about the older daughter?
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma, okay, that's why.
And then there's Travis.
Oklahoma, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, don't have it.
Yeah, we're, we get, we're close to Travis and Angela, they come over a lot and play games with us, and he's a mess, I'll tell you what, he's something else.
We don't get to see Travis except that church.
Yeah, yeah, that's unfortunate.
Yep.
Unfortunate.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, he's something else.
What do you think of all these shenanigans going on?
Well, I don't know, 'cause I wasn't.
What's your name?
Michael, Michael Kenny.
Okay.
People call me Mike, Mike.
You put any names aboard?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
I, I'm having a hard time still trying to understand both sides of the issue, I was at the community council meeting the other day, and you know, I heard some of the things that they said there, and some of it I kind of agree with, but then some of the stuff that they have said here, I agree with too, and it's like, so, I don't, I don't know.
The main, the main problem that started all this, and they say it's because Linda O'Brien didn't get on the board following the rules and regulations, she was the next highest voter, that should have replaced Dan Sullivan.
Oh, okay.
But that's not the reason, the reason that this committee started up is because they don't follow the rules and regulations, and everything that Maria said is not true to fact.
I don't know, where do you get a copy of the rules and regulations?
They're online.
They're online?
Yeah, go to, let me see if I can get it. Function Brain, Brain works a little slow sometimes.
Send back.
Where do I get that from?
Yeah, 'cause I keep hearing these rules and these regulations, and I know that you got Fort Clark rules and regulations for the homeowners, but I don't know about all this other stuff.
I don't wanna get out of this. Well, even when GoD it, even when you do that, I'm gonna Google it.
Good old Google.
Oh, yes, I wouldn't do without it.
I think there's some rights and some wrongs on both sides, and if I get on the board, my, my main goal will be to hopefully work towards bringing peace between the two,
Well, seemingly not here isn't all that big.
Yeah.
This is fortclark.com, or the fort's website. Okay, I don't know what it's under anymore. You've got membership documents, it would be in documents.
Oh, just fortclark.com, okay.
And you've got the bios, declaration of to get, check it out. Rules and regulations, it's got all the.
Ah, okay, okay.
I might have missed something with this. Regulations, all this stuff.
All right, so I just gotta go to fortclark.com, okay.
Yeah, and it's under, it's under the fort and dot net documents.
Cool, okay, good matches, cool, appreciate that. Yeah, 'cause I keep hearing all this stuff about rules and regulations, I'm like, where are these rules and regulations? I've got a copy of, you know, what is it, rules and something, but that's got to do with the membership, you know what I mean, on the fort itself, I don't think it's a legal, it's not the legal stuff, I don't believe, so, it's other stuff, you know, what you can do on your property, what you can't do, and talks about having to submit, if you wanna make changes, submitting architectural, you know, or filling out a form and requesting this and that, or painting your house, you know, this type of stuff, so.
Yeah, there's, there's historical conversations of this.
Yeah, yeah.
But I believe they only offer historical, the houses, and column rows, this couple on, although, there is an actual historic, history.
Yes, yes, yeah, there's one out here around the parade. Oh, yeah, oh, now where's your house?
Crockett, across the middle of the park.
Oh, okay, okay, back over there, okay, yeah, got you.
What is left except for my husband and children?
You know, it's hard to believe they had so many stables out there at one time.
I know.
They must have had a huge amount of horses for all those stables, 'cause I mean, they've got a map, and it shows on the other side of the road to Spofford, there were stables out there, bunch of them.
There's more right there in that complex, right where they are now, that was even larger.
Yeah, yeah, unreal. I would have loved to seen pictures of this place during its heyday, you know, in the 40s, but I've never seen that.
The Sutcliffe store has a fort, and I don't remember the name of it, it's hard to tell on, he's got all the old creatures, back in the 1850s.
Yeah.
Back to the fort.
I would have loved to seen like an aerial view of everything, it would have been something else. I've not seen.
They didn't have drones.
No, 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 they didn't have planes.
The army, the army might have, you know, they might.
That's a possibility, they may have a lot of pictures stuck in an archive somewhere, you know, so, yeah, hard to say. It'd probably be like that thing on Indiana Jones, they got this huge warehouse, and it's stuck in there somewhere.
Well, actually, they do, my nephew used to work in, I don't know the legal terms for the place, but it was an army place in Washington DC, he was in the. Well, actually, they do, I, my nephew used to work in, I don't know the legal terms for the place, but it was an army place, in Washington DC, he was in the medical archive, headed the medical archives.
Oh, wow.
Department, they've gone through the stuff, uh, we found some paperwork for Fort Clark's.
Is that right?
And he sent me copies of this stuff, and we lived in Torizo at the time, and they had a historical section in their, uh, library, and I donated this stuff there, not realizing that we were gonna come back here.
Yeah, wow.
We've been here since, maybe.
Is that right?
Except we had, we left when they got transferred to Torizo Springs.
You probably met my momma then, and maybe my dad, 'cause they lived here, oh, when did they move here, early nineties, late eighties, early nineties, I think it was, they, they came back and lived here until about two thousand, I think it was.
Last year, two thousand, two thousand four, two, two, two thousand, and take back in, okay? My boy graduated high school, and said, bye, we're going back, I said, I've been telling you, and she stayed there. Broken glass. No paper.
No, cut somebody. It's probably leftover from when they replaced those windows, looks like those apparently new windows. And there's so much work that needs to be done on this place, it just costs a lot of money.
And see, that's, that's some of the good stuff that she's doing.
Yeah.
The only thing is, where's she getting the money, she keeps saying that, you know, we don't have any.
It's gotta be coming from somewhere.
Yeah, I know.
Well, that's like all the money they said that's still owed the fort, that members haven't paid for their dues, their membership dues or whatever, and, or assessment, property assessment, whatever you wanna call it.
And she mentioned that, they mentioned that they may have to, um, charge another assessment to us to cover legal.
Yeah.
But the people that are all upset with this whole mess, and there are a lot, they're not gonna want to do that.
No.
So, that'll just be another debt not paid. And then there's, there's.
It's a mess.
There's gotta be solutions.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Somewhere. And both sides need to sit down and talk about it, to, to.
I think they need.
To even it out.
They need a session where they just all sit down, the, the, the board of the community, uh, uh, council group, and this group here, and hash it all out.
Another town hall meeting where everybody gets to talk, not just one question per person.
I don't know how the different councils meet with the board, I don't know how they get their information to them, I haven't figured that out yet, so, I don't think it's here in these meetings.
No, they, they, they set updates to me.
Oh, okay.
Bill, this is Mike Katty, he's, he's one of the guys running.
I've seen him around.
Yeah.
But I didn't know who he was.
Yeah.
He goes to church with us. He's in front, no, you do it.
Yeah.
I'm telling him, because he doesn't go.
Oh.
He sits in front of us, and he, he leads us in singing.
Good, can he sing?
Huh? Yes, he can sing, only thing is, I wish he'd say some songs that we know how to sing.
Some of the oldies, huh, yeah, are good songs. Good songs.
Excuse me. Was it ten forty-three when they were at? Yeah.
I wanna do my paper. I don't know what I did. Somebody took it from over here.
See, the thing that Jack came. Do I have notes on it?
I just asked Matt a question.
Well, you had it in your hand when you were there.
Yeah, I know, but I had left it over there when I went to get coffee. That's fine, I asked Matt, what's the hunting schedule, 'cause remember we talked about it, the meetings at the.
Well, I wanted to know what area is, and he said, it's back there, whether they're bringing for the bowman.
He said, it's all over, they move it, they move everybody, they move them around, both hunting, deer, bus, ball.
When does it all end, when does hunting season over?
I think it's, it's Februaryish somewhere. But then, you know, there's, you've got, then you've got turkey season coming up, you could do, you know?
I agree.
Yeah, that's, that starts March.
They, you can go out and, and kill havelinas anytime you want.
Anytime you want, at night.
I would, you know, if you wanna do it, you probably would have to get permission from Matt to make sure that you go out where there's nobody, you know, nobody's out there.
Yeah, I know they have those, uh, signs up, danger, or whatever it is, signs where they, for the trails, you know, and stuff, but, and my wife and I went out and went behind the dog, and we were standing there, and noticed there wasn't any signs up, so we were driving around like a new.
No, I know, but the twenty-four.
All right, we're back, uh, calls me to order at eleven oh six, we return from executive session and discuss legal matters and member matters, there is nothing for the board to vote on, so at this time, I will ask, is there a motion on the floor during the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, real quick, who's DOC next month?
Oh, yes, Director on call, that individual, stand by one. Stand by, uh, would be Mr. Kirby, and Mr. Link is the lucky backup. Surprise, all right, now, at this point in time, I will also announce that, um, February nineteenth at nine thirty is the next board meeting, here in the boardroom, and so now that I have done my due diligence for the announcements, do I have any motion on the floor adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Have a motion on the floor, and a very excited second, all those in favor of adjournings being signed by by raising your hand. Meeting is adjourned at eleven oh seven.
She said she had a lot.
All right.
Yeah, you're right, they move them around, you never know what areas are gonna be closed or open, it's hard, it's hard to say, Maria, how you doing?
How are you, Mr. Katty?